You'd have to deal with the sheriff department about that, okay? Today for our inspiration and invocation, we have Dr. Justin L. Addington from the First Baptist Church. Dr. Addington served as the Minister of Music at First Baptist Church of Savannah, originally from Cowpeau, South Carolina, I got that right?
Cowpeau.
Cowpeau, okay, is, okay. He holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in music and from Livingston College, a Master of Sacred Music in Choir Conducting from Concord University in Wisconsin, and a Doctorate of Theology of Worship Studies from Robert E. Wagner Institute. With over twenty years of experience as a church musician and educator, Justin finds great joy in helping others make a connection between their faith journey and the discipline of music. In addition to his work at FBC, he maintains an active schedule as an accomplished pianist, as a recitalist, as a lecturer, and as a conductor. We so welcome, we're so glad to have in our presence Dr. Justin L. Addington. And what I would ask to do is that after he gets through with his inspiration and indicates time for prayer, that we all stand for time for prayer. And then following the prayer, then we will be led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Milton. Dr. Addington, the floor is yours.
Thank you for your time this morning. I'm honored to stand before you and to represent my church this morning. First Baptist Church is rather unique among the Baptist churches of the South. We left the Southern Baptist Convention about three decades ago, and we have tried to stay on the forefront of being a church that stands for issues of justice and inclusion. While we are very progressive in our theology and in our social issues, we maintain a very traditional and liturgical form of worship. And like most mainline denominations, we follow the Christian Year and the readings of the Revised Common Lectuary. And the gospel text for this coming Sunday morning is from the 10th chapter of Luke. And in that text, the disciples asked Jesus, "What do we have to do to inherit the kingdom of God?" And Jesus responded to the disciples by saying, "You have to love the Lord your God with all your heart, your mind, your soul, and strength, and you have to love your neighbor as yourself." And Jesus said that "all of the other teachings and commandments rest on these things." Now, I know that in the work of government, we do not prescribe to any one religion. And so that's why I find it so interesting that these words of Jesus in this case can be found in almost every prominent spiritual practice. The words that Jesus uttered there are taken from the Jewish Torah. And you can find words about loving your neighbor in teachings from Islam all the way to Buddhism. And so as we go about our work, both in the church and in the government, I think it's very important that we look to a common thing like that that can unite us in our work and in our practice. In the gospel account that I mentioned, Jesus goes on to answer the question of the disciples, "Who is our neighbor then?" And Jesus tells the story of the good Samaritan. There was a man on the road that was robbed, and religious leaders passed by this man too busy to give him care. This man was of a different tradition, a different faith, so they didn't have time for him. But then a Samaritan came by and gave the man care. And Jesus said, "This man was his neighbor because he showed him mercy." And that's what we're about, both in the work of the church and in the work of the government, to show kindness, love, and mercy to those we come in contact with. I don't claim to know a lot about politics, but from what I can see on the news, it's a lot like the church. We squabble over the smallest things. I mean, the churches have divided themselves over the color carpet they put down in the sanctuary. But as in the church and as in the government, we can come together on the common greater commandment that we're given in our faith practices, to care for one another, to love one another. I once visited a church that gave me a coffee mug as a thank you for coming to visit. And they boiled down this great commandment that I've talked about on the side of the mug by simply saying, "Love God, love neighbor, and all the rest doesn't matter." May that be truly said of all of us. Will you stand with me as we pray? "God of all people, we give you thanks for this day, and we ask that you be among us in our work in caring and loving for our neighbors. We ask that you give those in the power of governing wisdom and discernment. And we ask that you help them to help bring about a better world, a world of peace and justice. These things we ask in the name of the One who loves us. Amen."
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Dr. Addington, before you, if you come back to the podium, yeah, he'll bring it up. We didn't bring a coffee mug.
That's okay.
But we would love to give you this token of our appreciation for you coming today and sharing your words of wisdom. And the scripture you are referring us to is one that should hold dear to all of our hearts, how we love one another, so that we can stop a whole lot of the violence and other things that's going on. If love provide, then those things don't have a place in our society. So again, thank you for coming for us this morning and for sharing your words of wisdom with us.
My pleasure. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Kenneth A. Adams, District Eight, Vice Chairman.
Present.
Helen L. Stone, District One, Chairman Pro Tem.
Present.
Larry Gator Rivers, District Two.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District Three.
Present.
Patrick K. Farrell, District Four. Sonia Milton, District Five.
Present.
Aaron Whitley, District Six.
Here.
Dean Kickley, District Seven.
Here.
All right, let's move on to proclamations and special presentation. Proclamation recognizing July as Park and Rec Month in Chatham County. Park and Rec Director Proctor is here. Let me read this proclamation to you, and then we'll open it up for you to have words. "The county of Chatham, Georgia, proclamation. Whereas public parks and recreation systems are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for residents in communities around the world through recreation programming, leisure activities, and all other efforts. And whereas park and recreation activities provide opportunities for young people to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of society and create lifelong and continuous life experiences for older members of our community. And where it is, it's important to recognize the vital contribution made by employees and volunteers in the park and rec facilities who keep public parks clean and safe for visitors as well as organized activities. Now therefore, I, Chester A. Ellis, Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Park and Recreation Month in Chatham County, inviting all citizens to enjoy what Chatham County Parks and Rec has to offer, from playing your favorite sports to visiting the parks and trails to spending time with family and friends or just kicking back and relaxing. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand to cause the seal of Chatham County, Georgia, to be affixed this eighth day of July 2022." Mr. Proctor.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. This is a great honor. We, I'd like to recognize my deputy directors, Tony Murphy and Holly Holdsworth, and the rest of our 130 full-time employees and all the part-time employees. We thrive to make Chatham County one of the best parks and recreation systems in Georgia. And we've done a lot of improvements in the last, especially the last couple of years, but of course, the last eight years, we've done a lot of things, replacing a lot of playgrounds. We have 51 parks. And it's been very challenging the last couple of years with the pandemic and labor shortages and supply chain issues. But we are moving forward, and I'd like to report to y'all that our Parks and Recreation Department is strong and moving forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank your staff and all of you who do what you do to help us in our recreation endeavors and in our parks. Again, we say thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Recognition of Chatham County's AARP designation. We'll have the State Director come, as well as the outreach, community outreach person to present the certificate.
Good morning.
I stopped trying to, I wasn't gonna say your name, all right?
Kay Sabetta.
Say it again.
Kay Sabetta.
Sabetta?
Sabetta.
I didn't want to mess it up.
That's okay.
That's why, that's why I did it the way I did.
You wouldn't have messed it up.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
I'm Kay Sabetta with AARP Georgia. Thank you so much for fitting us in your very, very tight, busy schedule. I am joined by my colleague Jenny Jensen and our wonderful, amazing volunteers that represent your county. And want to congratulate Chatham County, the Board of Commissioners, County Manager Lee Smith, and Tara Jennings, who's worked with us to enroll your county into our AARP age-friendly network. We are really excited that you're part of the team and know that you are already doing the work of ensuring that the county is age-friendly and a local community. Wanted to, if it's okay, Chairman, for us to take a picture with you and the leadership. And also wanted to make a note on the record that you all have promoted me to be the State Director. I'm actually the Associate State Director for AARP. Just want to go on the record and make sure. But thank you, thank you for promoting me. And thank you all for your beautiful city. My colleague Jenny and I drove in last evening and had a wonderful day enjoying the riverfront and all the seafood. Remember I said I was gonna come down and have some seafood, but, so, it was spot on. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I say this as you all move up forward? Mr. Sabetta, I want to thank you and Mrs. Habisham. Mrs. Myrtle Habisham.
Yes, yes, I do want to say that as well.
For doing such a yeoman job and for promoting this for us. And it was a pleasure to work with you.
Yes, I want to go also on the record to say thank you to our volunteer State President, Myrtle Habisham, who is watching online and couldn't join us. She sends her regards and regret that she's not with us in person. And... Take a picture.
Mr. Lockett is the person that brought this to us.
Some of y'all gonna love that.
He's a hard carry, AARP-like me.
Age-friendly means all ages.
That's right.
Yeah, tell her, tell her I've been promoted. Yes, it'll be done when you do it.
We don't have any Chairman items or Commissioner items. We don't have any table items. We go to items for individual action. Board votes on the following appointment. Appoint John Taylor to the Chatham Area Transit Board. Is there motion?
Second.
Proclamation motion is second, that John Taylor be appointed to the Chatham Area Transit Board. All of the favor please say by casting your votes. All right, thank you. To request approval of the following budget amendments and transfer FY 2022 and the general fund appropriated $3,200,000 from fund balance and transfer to capital improvement fund. And the capital improvement fund increased revenue and expenditures, $3,200,000 for the Hutchinson Island Walls Stabilization Project FY 2023. And the capital improvement fund transfer, $240,000 from contingency to engineering payment evaluation hardware-software project. And two, in the solid waste fund appropriated $115,000 net excess to remove excess debris at the landfill. Is there a motion?
Second.
Proclamation motion is second. All right, got a question, Commissioner Farrell, from four.
Solid waste, uh, excess debris? The excess debris at the landfill, which landfills are we talking about?
That's the Wilmington Island Field. And that's a state requirement. They went out and did an inspection, and we need to remove some of the excess debris out there.
And where's it going?
We've got a couple of vendors. We take some to the landfill out on the west side of county, and then we've got a facility out off Bush Road where we take some to also.
All right. Is that the material that we use to mulch shrubbery along the medians in some of our county?
Yes, sir.
Maintain roads? Rather than pay for it to be hauled off, maybe we could pay for it to get out there in some of those beds and knock down some of the weeds and freshen up the bedding material?
Yes, sir. We use as much as we can. We still have the excess. So, and we try to give it away too, to the public that wants it. But we just got a lot of debris out there. So we're gonna use as much as we can.
All right, well, Highway 80 going towards Taby is in dire need of some mulch.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wright, he's looked at that, and he told me yesterday that they're gonna get a contractor out there to kind of clean up that area.
All right, and use up some of our excess mulch?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Adoption of the tax year 2022 millage levy resolution for the Board of Public Education for the City of Savannah and the County of Chatham pursuant to advertise having been published in accordance with OCGA 48-5-32.1. In addition, from Form PT-35, County Millage Rate Certificate, and Form PT-32-1, Compensation of the Millage Rate Rollback and Percentage Increase in Property Taxes for the year 2022. The forms must be certified and submitted to the Georgia Department of Revenue for digest approval for the tax year 2022. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Proclamation motion is second, that the, number three, the adoption of this levy for the school board be approved? All right, are you ready for the question? Any questions?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Stone?
Mr. Chairman, in all due respect, I will vote against this again. I just think it's terribly inappropriate for the school board to ask us to approve a budget that we've never seen. So I'm just gonna vote no again.
I agree. All right, any other? All right, please vote. Okay. We just see what happens. Request, let us move on.
It should have been changed a long time ago.
Please, please. Request vote approval of a resolution confirming matching funds and authorizing submittal of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Defense of up to $20 million. Note, $6 million are 30% match requirement. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman? Second.
Proclamation motion is second, that the request be granted. Are you ready for the question? Please signify by your vote. Okay. We go to the action calendar. No one indicated anything that they wanted to be pulled off to vote it separately. So may I have a motion to adopt the action calendar in its entirety?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Proclamation motion is second. Is there any court ready and readiness? And none, please vote. All right, first reader. Speed Zone Ordinance Update. Request the Board adopt revisions and approve the update list of roads for the Chatham County Speed Zone Ordinance. As first reader, we'll take it up as in entirety at the second. Going to our second readers. Number one is adopt amendment to Chapter 24, Article 1, Article 2, Article 7, and Article 8 of the Chatham County Code to add Section 24-1, 14.1, Section 24-206.1, Section 24-706.1, and Section 24-805.1 to provide authorization to the county engineer to issue notices, summons to court, and citations for violation. All right, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Proclamation motion is second, that it be adopted. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right. The petitioner, Tammy Twirewin-Hamilton, is requesting rezoning from APDR-MS Surface Mining to a RAA Residential Agriculture Zoning District at 241 Broadwater Lane, MPC File Number Z-0222-000229, PIN 110490108, District 7. The Planning Commissioner recommends approval of the petitioner's request to rezone the subject property from PDR-SM Surface Mining to RAA Residential Agriculture. Mr. Lockett?
Well, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm gonna make sure.
Well, I can, we can approve this unless there's someone in the audience. We don't need to hear a presentation.
Let me ask this, Mr. Lockett.
Yes, sir.
So we can shortcut this. That's what he's talking about. Is there anyone in the audience who is in opposition to this or in support of this who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, as the representative of this, I read the files. It was unanimous approval from the MPC. They're turning it from a mining thing to residential, so I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Proclamation motion is second, that the petitioner be granted. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your vote.
One quick question.
All right.
I'm supporting. Just to be sure, it's a home, not some homes?
A home.
Yes, sir. Great.
All right, cast your votes. Five and, all right. That's your shortest stint before?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We, yeah, Commissioner Kickley helped you out that time, all right? And let's give, now, is there anything from the individual? Information item, all right, Commissioner Kickley?
Mr. Chairman, because now that I saw that the, how the vote went with the Board of Education, I just want to explain for the people at home where I believe those that opposed approving it, why? But I'll speak for myself and say, this is why I opposed it, but I assume the others were in line with this. It's because the state of Georgia has had, they've had this crazy law in place forever that says that we on the Chatham County Commission have to approve the budget that the Board of Education sends over to us. And with the case today, I don't believe they proposed a tax increase. They may have even rolled it back. But that's absolutely an insane law to have on the books from the state of Georgia, asking a body, a group, to approve and not give us the option to deny a budget. That gives the illusion to the public that we are somehow in control of the Board of Education's revenues and taxes, and we're not. They dictate it to us. It's much like the tax commissioner's sitting out there. Whatever is sent to her, we, she has to do her job and do her job with it. And in this case, we're getting sent something that we're not responsible for, but we have to supposedly approve it. So I don't know what'll happen here with us finally denying it. I've been, along with Commissioner Stone and I believe Farrell for sixteen and twenty-two years now, voting against this every year because it is a, it's absolutely insane state law to make us look like we're responsible for something when the state law gives us no choice but to approve their budget. We can approve a budget whenever we don't even see a budget. We have no idea what's going on over there at all. We have zero responsibility, zero accountability. We have nothing to do with the Board of Education unless we're working together on trying to provide recreation areas and things like that for the entire community. But that's their elected jobs to oversee the school boards, oversee the school budgets, and that's our job to oversee the county things. Two totally separate things. It's finally, we had enough to say no to the nonsense. And I guess we're gonna just have to see what happens because I'm guessing we'll go to court, but they need to change the law.
We do need to bring something up. Staff just sent me something. By not approving today, the higher rate will stay in place. The rollback will not occur. So the higher rate will stay in place. I just had to let you know that. That's what would happen.
Wow.
Well, listen, that's the fix we in.
Then, well, that should have been, that should have been brought to our attention. Then as a member of the prevailing, as a person that voted in favor of the prevailing side, I make a motion to reconsider having been presented this new information.
All right. He needs a second, or we can do it just with his asking for it. We need a second.
Second.
All right, some proclamation motion is second, that we reconsider, all right?
All right, may I? This is very simple. Point can be made.
Okay, all right, hold on, hold on, hold on. So we'll stay, so we'll stay on top of legal, all right? Let us, you gotta vote.
About the reconsider.
Voting to reconsider.
We're voting to reconsider.
You're voting to reconsider. Mr. Chairman. All right.
If I may, please, since I still have the floor.
He still has the floor. All right, I got you. If you just raise your hand, I'll put your name down and put your number. All right, I got, I got you, if you just raise your hand, I'll put your name down and put your number down and we'll go. All right, from there, all right, now, seven still had the floor, Commissioner Kicklight is on the floor.
As the person that's kinda led this little charge along with Commissioner Stone down there for several years, this should be an easy, no-brainer. The point I've wanted to make all this time is on those years when the Board of Education wants to raise taxes, that I'm not responsible, but I'll be doggone if I want us to be remotely. We would be responsible for a tax increase with what's been presented to us because we know that a no vote at this point in time is gonna raise the millage rate or keep it where it is rather than reducing it. So with your permission, I'm going to make a motion to approve the original request.
All right, give me a second. I still, I still, I, all right, it's been proper motion is second that we reconsider.
We already voted on that.
That, oh, me, I'm sorry, that we adopt, all right? The tax millage rate for the school board. Now for the unreadiness, let us go to Commissioner Lockin at three.
Mr. Chairman, I just simply want to say that was my reason for putting it on the floor. I wanted to put it on the floor for discussion, and we did, and I thought it came out very favorable.
All right. Commissioner Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It still gives me great concern that we are supposed to approve something that we're never even given the courtesy of seeing. There's no one here from the school board if we had a question about their budget or their millage or their rollback, there's no one here. I don't feel comfortable being responsible for a budget that I haven't even had the opportunity to look at, review. It seems to me that a few weeks ago there was some discussion about an accounting error with the school board. I, I just, I just think it's wrong, and I don't think that we should be held accountable for a budget that we're, we have nothing to do with. So I, I, I just, it's, it's very problematic to me. We've been asking for years for this law to be addressed and changed, and nobody seems to wanna pay attention. But you're asking us to approve something that we haven't even seen. It's just wrong.
All right. Commissioner Milton and Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with Commissioner Stone. If we had seen the budget or had any information on it, we would've voted with the lower rate opposed to feeling as though they had already done an increase as they have done in the past. So had we had the information to review, we would've had a different outcome in the vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Whiteley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in echoing the same sentiment as my colleague Commissioner Stone, there's nobody here from the school board to even talk to us about this. I do understand that this is more about the millage rate rather than the budget, and that's, am I correct in saying that? That's why we're kinda in this situation. All right, so us adopting their millage is one thing, the budget is a separate issue.
Right.
Um, so this would be the millage, so I understand that. I agree with Commissioner Kicklight, I felt it's kinda presumptuous that we would vote on a budget, but that was me not understanding that this is about the millage rate, not about the specific budget. So with that, I stand in agreement with my colleagues to support.
And let me say to all of you now, just to, just, just to give you a little historical sketch, I have, it's number three under items for individual action. I have attended the, at, at the state Capitol, I have attended the education workshops that they had where this was talked about. And the smaller counties never let it get out committee, all right? You have, like, for instance, just giving the honor to do that's them. Representative Stevens and those have been on the floor and talked about this to them, and they get voted out, voted by the smaller counties, all right? And so it's not that nobody is bringing this up, it's just that they're fixing their ways and they're gonna do it. And so when you can't even get it out of committee, see, and that's where our, that's where our problem, our niche is. I, I think if we could one day get it out of committee and get it on the floor for discussion to the general body, you would have a different outcome, but it never gets out committee. Yes, sir.
So let me get this straight, have we been misled for my twenty-two years on here? I was told we absolutely have to approve whatever the Board of Education requests here, but if we voted no today, it would actually increase somebody's taxes?
They'd have to use what was already, that was already in place, yes.
So in the future, if they wanna propose a tax increase, we can vote no.
No, sir, that's not, not correct. If this is gonna be a litigation issue, I really don't care to discuss it right, right here, but, you know...
We'd go to court either way.
Probably half a dozen times on the requirement of the taxing authority, levying authority to pass school board budget. I don't think the law's changed on that, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm more than willing to go to court if we're actually reducing people's taxes or keeping them the same, but I, I don't wanna go to court on a year that the Board of Education wants to actually reduce the people's taxes, so.
Make your motion then to adopt the budget of the Board of Education and fix that problem.
Well, I will make...
That's what's on the floor now.
I will make a motion to approve number three under items for individual action as it's written.
We've got the, we've got it. What we would do...
That's, that's number three, right, of items?
Right.
That's why I said approve number three as written.
Right, and that's what, that's the, that's the motion on the floor, right?
Yes.
Okay, so now we've got all unwritten, so I recognize everybody. Yeah, so all we gotta do now is vote. All right? We in discussion phase, and after discussion, if everyone is through, then we go to voting. Please cast your votes. Waiting on two, all right? Okay, now, let me, let me, in case we overshadowed something that the attorney said, if it's about litigation, you have to go in executive session, and he can tell you what he wanna tell you, all right? And, and, 'cause in executive session, which we are going, getting ready to go into, we're going to do litigation, personnel, and, yeah, land acquisition, all right? So now, is there a motion to go into executive session?
What about the information items?
He said he didn't have any.
I, I've got one that I'd like to ask about, it'll take a minute.
Okay, well, hold, hold up on what I just said, then, okay, I didn't know.
Okay, um, just back to the mulch situation. It looks like the public mulching site on Montgomery Crossroads hasn't been supplied in quite some time, and I don't think that anybody could get some mulch there 'cause there's none. I, I haven't noticed any, so could you give me an update on the Montgomery Crossroad site? And as a follow-up, if there are organizations, neighborhood associations, beautiful, you know, garden clubs, whatever, that may be interested in our mulch, could we make some sort of arrangement instead of hauling this off to a landfill that we could actually haul it to, and dump it somewhere? Because most people don't have their own dump trucks and, and heavy equipment, but if you dumped a pile of, of mulch that we need to get rid of and they need to, mulch is very expensive when you're trying to do beds and that sort of thing. If, if we could have some way of, of sending trucks around the county to our, to, and that would alleviate some of the problem and keep the landfill from filling up so quickly. I think you could kill two birds with one stone. And I believe some people in the, in the county would appreciate a big tandem dump truck load of free mulch that would show up, and then we could solve a problem by not having to maybe haul it as far away to, to get it to where it needs to go.
All right, Mr. Manager, does, does he have, he wanna respond to that, or that's not?
No, I, we need to talk about it because that's a logistics issue too, so we, let us talk to staff and we'll see what we come up with.
Right, well, like I say...
So he'll get an update from you all?
Well, update all of us, I think all of us are interested in the issue. If we're gonna pay somebody a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to haul mulch in a, in a truck somewhere, why couldn't they be directed to go to XYZ neighborhood or XYZ garden club or XYZ beautification group or what have you? I don't know the answer to that question, it just seems like, you know, with a little extra effort, we could, we could beautify the county and get rid of a, a organic waste issue at the same time.
Okay, all right.
That's all I got, information.
All right, motion to move into executive session? Proper motion is second that we go into executive session. Please cast your votes. Yeah. 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 I didn't see it. Number one?
Well, if not, it'll be on the next agenda.
Number one? Vote, vote, see, waiting on your vote.
I'm sorry.
Okay, there you go. All right, we in executive session.